...in recording of members present and absent. Hanson.
Present.
Kane.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Open meeting compliance statement read. I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alva Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December the 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice that the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was supposed to be common at the view at the location of the meeting. The consent agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of a discussion, of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. 3.1, addition of items of new business to the agenda.
There are any.
3.2, minutes of November 4th, 2019, regular board meeting. 3.3, approval of the finance report. 3.4, approval of the activity fund report. 3.5, approval of activity fundraisers. 3.6, approval of activity fund inter-account transfers. 3.7, approval of an application for sanctioning. 3.8, approval of the child nutrition report. And 3.9, declare the following items as surplus.
Okay, we'll go back up and start with 3.2, our minutes from the November 4th, 2019 meeting. I did not see any errors. 3.3, our finance report. If you will look at the attachment that has been provided, you can see once again that when we look at our gross production, which has been our main source of revenue over the past few years, we are over 400,000 behind today comparatively to last year, but we are up in our other areas in our motor vehicle REA and county form. I also put another little comparison chart there if you will look at the next one and it kind of cuts off into both pages, but it's a revenue expense comparison. I've been showing that to you in a graph form, but I gave you some numbers this month. Go back to graph next month. But it just kind of details and compares us from last year's fiscal year to this year with regard to our collection of revenue and our expense. And so you can look down there at the bottom that we have spent 184,000 more this year than last, and we collect 174,000 less. And so you can see the downturn in the economy has affected us as a school district. With regard to the gross production collection and that taxed, I believe it was around 94,000 this past month, and that's about as low as I can remember it being as far as a monthly collection. So that's something we continue to monitor. We look at the activity fund report. All of our activity funds are in good shape. We will see in a few minutes that there are some new fundraisers that are going to be presented to the board, but Mrs. Durkey and the sponsors and our principals are doing a good job of monitoring those. Look at the 3.5, the activity fundraisers. We have two fundraiser requests. The first is a cheer fundraiser, and that's to car hop at Sonic. This is going to help with costs to their national competition. Expected profit is about 1,000 visiting with Mrs. Durkey. That's about the average that groups that have car hopped at Sonic, that's what they've been able to make. The second fundraiser, 3.5, is La Club. So we've had a change on a home date for basketball, and I believe that that date is December 19th, and that is going to be at home now against Fairview. And so because that game is now at home, we've always used before those games, they've served a meal as a fundraiser for those clubs. And so La Club will be serving a meal before the game on December 19th. Okay, the 3.6, the activity fund inter-account transfers, we have two items within. The first is our football gate, and so you can see some of the compares or you can see from this year compared to last year, we have a lower gate distribution, but that is using the percentages that we've used in the past. We have 50% football gets gate, and then basketball gets 30% of that total, and then all of our other sports, baseball, softball, track, golf, and soccer get 20% of that total gate. And so that is the transfer from that. If you look at the second item there in the inter-account transfers, that is the Washington fundraiser. We did something a little bit different with our elementary schools. We tried to be mindful of our fundraising efforts with our community and tried to do less door-to-door sales with our community and do a combined fundraiser. And I want to commend Mr. Feely, Mrs. Williams, and Mrs. Tucker and their teachers. They formed a committee. They worked really well together. This was a really good event, and they raised some good money to help defray some costs for their students. And so this is the transfer from that fundraiser. 3.7, the application for sanctioning. A few months ago, DeLa Cushionberry, DeLa Leal, and Lexi Lauderdale came in to see me, and actually, we probably met, maybe last year we had met, and with the idea that they wanted to find a way to help support our students and our teachers with school supplies. And so DeLa and Lexi have gotten together. They have formed a committee with teachers from each site, with parents from each site, and their plan is to be called the Goldbug Education Coalition and to raise money to help defray school supply costs. And so they're bringing this request to you to have approval, and they will begin doing some fundraisers to raise money to help defray some of those costs. So I appreciate that group, and I appreciate them getting together and working on that. I know Todd Holder has also been a part of that, and it's helped them get that off the ground, so I appreciate it all.
When you ask, when you say each site, you're saying high school?
Yes.
Middle school?
Yes.
And all three grade schools?
All five.
Okay.
All five sites, yes.
Very good. Thank you for that verification.
3.8, approval of the child nutrition report. Looking at that report, the top part of that report is our revenue collection for the month, and I track this each month just to give you an idea of what we collected last year, what we're projecting. And if you look at our last column, that difference between FY '19 and FY '20, we're still doing well in all areas of our food service, and you see we're a little bit behind in our federal reimbursement for lunches and breakfast, but that, of course, will pick up. We're usually behind in those areas. Just to give you some comparison numbers to the top of that, child nutrition report, in 2019 and 2018, we did some, or actually, yeah, we did some comparison of those numbers for the month of November. You can see that we are down in both lunches and breakfast for the month of November, served today less, but for whatever reason, we are down in those. And then finally, on the consent agenda, 3.9, our surplus. These are some read books from Washington that they would like to surplus and take those to bus car, because we're no longer using. Any questions that you might have on the consent agenda? If there are none, I would recommend it's approved.
I make a motion, we approve consent agenda items 3.2 to 3.9.
I'll second that.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Item number four, vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for fiscal year '20. 4.1, general fund. Do I have to read all of that?
I can say how it's presented, can't you? Yes.
4.1 as referenced, 4.2 as reference for the building fund, 4.3, child nutrition fund as referenced, and 4.4, the gift fund as referenced.
Okay, so we'll look at our general fund purchase orders. Run through a couple of those of note. Purchase order number 478 is Grey Dog Mechanical, and that was for 8,832. That's a new unit that we put at the high school for the home ec room. Purchase order number 45, Alpha Roofing. We did some repairs to the ag building this summer, and that is the cost of that. Number 46, Securely Eek, 4,710. This is a software program that allows teachers to be able to look at student screens while they're working in class. Purchase order 496. 496 and 497 kind of go together. We had a leak in the third floor bathroom at Lincoln, and it was in the middle dividing wall between your journals and your sink, and then that water was running down into the fourth floor bathroom. And so this was to do repairs over Thanksgiving break. They had to put in some new pipe and then replace some of those, replace the tie. Purchase order number 501, CDWG, 2,836. This is for our Sonic wall in the district. Purchase order number 501, Treat Solutions, 13,542. This is for our custodial supplies for all spring. And then that is all that I have. Any questions on the general fund purchase orders? Purchase orders for the payroll, you will see those listed below on the second part of that attachment. Those are substitutes, and then with approval, our new IT director. We don't have any building fund expenditures in 4.2, no child nutrition in 4.3, and there is nothing in the gift fund in 4.4. Are there any questions?
So if I hear you correctly, 4.1's the only one that has had any activity, so I'd make a motion that we take care of 4.1.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Number five, superintendent's report.
Okay. Before we do resignations and reassignments, we'll turn it over to Mr. Feely, and he's going to do a brief presentation on our state report cards that were released in the last few weeks. Mr. Feely.
Okay. So previous grade cards, students could count multiple times, and now in the last two years, they've made it where a student only counts one time based on a characteristic that would be deemed is the most impactful to their achievement. And so they've basically figured this out through multi-regresional research to determine which is the most impactful way to identify these kids. So for instance, if you had a student with an IEP, they automatically will fall into students with disabilities, and so their target scores are based on that characteristic. If they did not have an IEP, but they were economically disadvantaged, they fall under that category. And so these things are all in order. So if you weren't economically disadvantaged, or an ELL learner, or a student with a disability, then you're going to automatically fall under whatever your race and ethnicity is. So those are ranked by the most impactful student groups. Okay, so as we go through this, that kind of impacts on how, how many points we get for each kid, each student, depending on how they fared on the OSTP. So what you're looking at, there are five indicators for each grade card, but not every campus is going to have all of those, and you'll see that in a little bit. So under academic achievement, this is how our students would have fared on the Oklahoma State testing program or the high school ACT. And so they're given a target score based on their student grouping, and if they reach their target score, they would get .95 points. That's a federal requirement. You couldn't give them a full point. It has to be under a point, so the state decided .95 points is what you'd get for that. If the student was considered proficient, meaning they got a 300 on the scale score, which is considered to be on pace for college and career-ready, then they get one full point for that. If they score advanced, they get 1.25 points. So they add all these scores together, and they punch it into a formula, kicks out kind of a abstract number that kind of makes it difficult to make a whole lot of meaning of it, but that goes into their scale for the grade on that particular area. Now, the reason that they did it this way with the student groups is they want to reward schools for showing growth in those student groups. Okay? Chronic absenteeism. All sites got a grade for chronic absenteeism, and basically what it amounts to is if your student was there at least 90% of the time, then the school gets a full point for that. That would depend on how many days you have in school. So if you had 175 days in school, then 17.5 absences is the breaking point for whether you get that point or not. If you had some snow days and it reduced you down to 172, then 17 would be the breaking point. And so you'll see here in a little bit, you know, we'll talk about how many kids we actually have in that category. Graduation, only the high school will get a grade on this particular aspect of the grade card. And when a student completes their eighth grade year and enters high school, they are considered to be a part of a cohort that is on pace to graduate in four years. And if they, if they do that, then the school gets points for that. If they do not, then we get dinged for it. So there's only, only three ways that a student could be removed from a cohort, and that would be if they transferred to another diploma issuing school. So a student transferred from here to Cherokee, they're now part of Cherokee's cohort. And homeschooling does not count. That would count as a dropout for us if they went to homeschool. If a student immigrated, meaning left the country, went to a foreign country, we can pull them out that way, and then if they passed away during the school year. So once they're established in the cohort, they're pretty well there. Okay? So these are the scale scores when we talk about academic achievement. Based on what's, these are the student groups that they might fall under. 300 is considered proficient and college and career-ready, or at least on pace for that. And so if you look here, students with disabilities, grade three, they had to get a 2.72 or 272 on their assessment to get .95 points. If they didn't reach that, we got zero points for that. Okay? And so the important reason that I put this in here is that this year, that was 272. Last year, it was probably 269. Next year, it's going to be 275 or 276. So those targets are moving targets. Every year, they're going to go up, and that, that can be troublesome because you could be making growth. We could be showing progress, but not enough progress. And so you could, it's kind of punitive as you go. So anyway, that's language arts, and there's your math scores. How they came up with these targets, I don't know. I do know this, that the moving target was something that was negotiated between the state department and the governor's office when Mary Fallon was in office, and the governor's office was very adamant that this be in there, that these targets continue to be more challenging. And so that's how those, those targets were set.
Any questions on that?
Okay. All right, so then there's, there's an academic growth indicator. The high school doesn't have an academic growth indicator because they only give the ACT during their junior year. That's the only year that they get credit for it. We could have a sophomore or freshman take the ACT, and it won't show up on our grade card. So if they did really well, we're not going to get credit for it until they're junior. So on academic growth, you have to have a previous state assessment, and it has to be in consecutive years. So for instance, fifth grade, they take science, and then they take science again in eighth grade. There's no growth there because it's not consecutive years. So everything has to be in consecutive years. So for instance, fourth grade reading to fifth grade reading, we'll have an academic growth number for that. And the indicator gives points for students who move from one target band to the next target band, which, this is the little chart that they use to come up with our points. So you've got below basic low, below basic high, basic low, basic high, proficient low, proficient high, advanced low, advanced high. So for instance, if the previous year, you were considered proficient low, and then in that same year, you actually went down to basic high, you still get 80 points. You get 100 points if it was proficient low, and so on and so forth. So you have to show growth from one band to the next band most of the time to gain points on the academic growth indicator. So they're incentivizing growth, and in some cases, this again is kind of difficult to jump from one to the next. Any questions on that? Okay. The next indicator is English language learners. You have to have at least 10 ELLs at your site to receive a grade. The only site we have that has more than 10 is the high school. They have, I believe, 16, and you're awarded points by how they progress towards English proficiency on the WEDA assessment, which is very difficult. You can have students who maybe speak Spanish at home, they come to school and speak perfectly good conversational English, and they may not score proficient on the WEDA because it is kind of difficult, and it's a very difficult test. So this is why our ELL position is so important, is trying to progress some of these kids towards English proficiency or bilingualism on the WEDA assessment. The last indicator is post-secondary opportunities. Sites are awarded one point per student. So if you have a student who gets multiple college current enrollment credits, they still just get one point, and that is to incentivize schools to get more kids to do that. We want kids to do post-secondary opportunities. And so the kinds of things that we offer are industry certifications through Career Tech, college prep coursework in AP, or dual concurrent enrollment through college. We did very well on this. We have a lot of kids that take advantage of this, and we need to continue to stress that and make that a big part of our high school. So this is, the high school would be the only one that would get that particular indicator. During different periods of the year, principals have to validate their information, and for instance, the graduation indicator, there are three different reports that the high school has to validate the data on. And I know Mr. Potter last year told you that, you know, we didn't have a very good grade on that last year because we didn't do a very good job getting that validated, but we've corrected that, and we've shown progress there, and we think that we'll show more progress even in the next year on that particular indicator. So they were, the State Board of Education approved these on November 25th, and they're actually on the webpage, www.OklahomaSchools.com, I'm sorry. And so you can see those online. Here's what our grade cards look like. At the high school, D on academic achievement, C on graduation. If you notice the chronic absenteeism, everybody got pretty good grades on chronic absenteeism, but I think that's somewhat misleading, and we're going to talk a little bit about that here in just a second. As you notice, Washington only has chronic absenteeism because we don't have any state assessments at that building. Longfellow has the third grade reading test, so they show something on academic achievement, but they don't have a previous assessment, so you don't see anything for growth. So there's no overall grade for either one of those buildings. Then you go to Lincoln, and you do have achievement, you do have academic growth because there was a previous assessment. Chronic absenteeism ain't no overall grade. So as you can see, what we've got to focus on is academic achievement and academic growth if we want to move the needle on this thing. Are there any questions about those particular indicators with regard to our sites? All right, so here's recommendations. This is, when we dig into the data, we have on average anywhere from eight to 12 kids at any campus that would be considered chronically absent, meaning over 17 absences. Some may range all the way up to 60 absences. So consider this, 17 absences is very nearly a full month of instruction. So if you look at moderately absent kids, six, now this is a definition, this isn't the state's definition, this is a definition from a research study that I had taken a look at. Six to 16 absences, 60% of our students at Washington would be considered moderately absent. 41 at Longfellow, 41 at Lincoln, 39 at the middle school, 43 at the high school. So if we could shave five to six absences, and think about how much more instruction you get out of that, then your academic achievement numbers likely improve. We're also want to continue to develop our staff on research-based instructional strategies and engagement, which is part of our strategic plan, and we need to track that and be accountable for it. A lot of people will look at a grade card and say, well, let's get to test prep and let's buy test prep booklets. It's not really the answer. We've got to continue to be capable of these research-based instructional strategies, things that have proven to work. Continue to stress post-secondary opportunities, which has been a feather in our cap. We've done a good job in that area. And then track attendance, sending out attendance letters. I will tell you, I sent out attendance letters, and a lot of times I get phone calls, and I want to know why I got a letter. And, you know, we just want, we want those parents to be notified about how many absences they have, not get to the end of the semester and realize they've got nine or 10 absences. And then what I, what I put up here was just something I talked to my buddy over at Enid High. They celebrate chronically present, and they, so if they have one absence by the check in September, they get to go out for ice cream cones and snow cones out front of the school. If they only have two in October, they get to be exempt from a nine weeks test. If they have only three by November, they bring in food trucks to the high school, and then December is a semester test exemption as well. So, you know, we probably need to do a little better job of disseminating the information about chronic absenteeism into the community and letting the parents understand why that's, we think that's important. And then I, you know, that's just, we want to do a good job for those kids, and we can't do that if they're not there. So, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Feely. A lot of information, a lot of number crunching that Mr. Feely worked on and did this with the help of the rest of the administrators, and I appreciate their work on this. You know, you look at, we look at the overall grades, and it can be pretty discouraging when you see where we're at. That's not where we want to be. I think the encouraging part of it is that there is a plan that's been developed, and part of that really is going to be seamless with what we've worked on with our community and our strategic plan. But it comes down to accountability and making sure, like Mr. Feely said, those students are in school, and we're teaching them to the best of our ability, and we plan on doing them.
You have resignations and reassignments?
Okay. 5.2, resignations and reassignments. We'll start with our first attachment. We have a resignation from Coley Bilil. Coley is going to be furthering his education in the Oklahoma City area. Coley has been a custodian at the high school, and his last work day will be January 9th. We appreciate Mr. Bilil and the work that he's done for the high school. Caitlin Bazay is going to be leaving us all the way in June, full-time leaving us in June, but she's going to go on maternity leave, and then we'll come back, and it's going to be a resource for us, and she's promised to always be a resource for us, and so we appreciate her, and we're definitely going to miss her. Mr. Potter is going to be resigning and heading back to Pohuska. We appreciate the impact Mr. Potter has had on our high school. He's got grandkids back here, and we know that we will see more of him in the future. Mrs. Williams will be resigning. Mrs. Williams has done an outstanding job, and we are going to miss her leadership, instructionally and professionally. She is, will definitely be missed in the room. And then Verlita Eccles, our food service manager. Verlita, got to talking to her, and she has driven a bus for the district. She's, she's worked for us for a long time, and we're thankful for the time she has spent not only driving bus, but helping in our food service. She's worked really hard to make sure our students have plenty of food choices and has worked really hard in that kitchen, so we appreciate Verlita and all that she's done for Alva Public Schools. And that is all I have.
Number six, items of current business. 6.1, discussion with possible board action. Vote to enter into a contract with Kyler Construction Group Incorporated to serve as a construction manager for Phase One of the Alva School District building projects.
I thank, shame for being a part of this process and helping with the interview. This contract has been vetted by our attorney. He also added an addendum to clarify some things for the construction manager. I sent that to the construction manager last week. They were agreeable to it, signed it, and sent it back that same day, and so I would recommend to the board that we approve this contract with Kyler Construction Group to begin our Phase One projects.
So moved. So move.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
6.2, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve the Alba School District calendar for school year 2020 to 2021.
I want to thank again our committee that got together. We had a committee of parents from each site and a committee of teachers, excuse me, representative of teachers from each site and had a really good conversation. We met twice over the course of last month and had really good discussions on the best way we could come up with some options for our teachers and really our families in the community. And they, this committee did a great job. And so we sent out two proposals to our teachers and staff, all staff to vote on. And this was the winning calendar. And so I would recommend that we approve this district calendar for 2020, 2021.
Make that motion and applaud the committee for their diligence and cooperation.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.3, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve an offer of employment to applicant number one, non-certified position for 2019 to 2020.
So I would like to introduce Trevor Lording. We are bringing him to you today. Trevor has some experience in IT, working for Farmers Bank. I want to thank Caitlin, who sat in and was a key resource during those interviews. We are excited about Trevor and we feel like he's going to do a great job. And I would ask that we approve this offer of employment.
Make a motion to approve this offer of employment to Trevor.
I'll second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Congratulations, Parker.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Trevor, it's great to have you. You can stay if you like, but you don't have to. Totally up to you. Okay? Thanks, Trevor. We'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you.
We're going to table item 6.4.
Yes, I'd ask the board to table item 6.4. We expected to receive a lease from Wells Fargo over the Thanksgiving holiday break that we were on. And Mr. Ellis got with me today and we were not able to receive that lease. And so we will possibly bring that to you in January. Okay?
So still want to vote on that motion to leave. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I make the motion, we table that. Item 6.4 until notification is received.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
6.5, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve the revised extra duty salary schedule for fiscal year '20.
I want to thank Ms. Kane and Mr. Hanson again for meeting with our extra duty committee. We reviewed the salary schedule for really one particular reason, not just to add a payment for translator. And one of the things that we've run into in the district is when we've needed somebody to translate, whether it's for an IEP or for a parent-teacher conference, we've been not, we haven't been able to compensate those folks. And so we want to be able to do that. And so we've made that adjustment to the salary scheme. So I would recommend that we approve this extra duty salary schedule for FY '20.
Make a motion, we approve 6.5, the revision of the extra duty salary schedule.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.6, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve out-of-state travel for students to attend the Kansas Beef Expo livestock judging contest in Hutchison, Kansas on December 13th, 2019.
And this was a trip that we approved as of more last year and I would recommend its approval for Mr. Nation, Ms. Weathers to take those students to this contest.
I make the motion that we approve sending the students to Kansas State Beef Expo livestock contest at Hutchison, Kansas.
I'll second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Number seven, new business. Item number one. Number eight, close executive session to conduct ongoing evaluation of the superintendent per 25 OS Section 307b1. Vote to convene into executive session.
Why should we go to executive session?
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson? Yes.
Yes.